All right, the special roundtable meeting of the city council is now called to order, focused on continuing with the budget, uh, council's work budget. Uh, just a couple items beforehand, I did think, I did thought, think that early in the week that we were gonna do video on, for the council meeting, which would make it easier to see people, you know, raising their hand to get attention. But to make it easier, if someone does wanna ask a question, I'd ask, everybody put themselves on mute, except for the presenter, or whoever needs to speak at the time. When I see, if I see your microphone go off of mute, I'll assume you, you're in for attention. Or I'll, I'll see that as a, if I see your mic green, in other words, I'll, I'll see that as an indication that you'd like to speak, and I can call upon you.
Yeah, good.
All right. Um, any other questions before we get rolling? All right, with that, I'll turn it over to Robert, then, to go ahead with the presentation. Robert, are you ready?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay? Just one minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, we probably need to take a roll call, is Joan in the council team was there, or who could take roll call real quick, please?
Yep, I'm here. I'm here.
Joan, could you, could you please take roll call real quick?
Uh, can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes, could you please take roll call?
Councilmember Jeans?
Here.
Councilmember Ross? Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Lassay? Councilmember Shepard? Councilmember Sunball?
Here.
Um, once more, was there Councilmember Ross there?
Um, yeah, I just joined, I'm having a problem getting it on my computer.
Okay, Councilmember Lassay, are you there? And Mayor Larson?
I am here. Uh, may I have a motion of second to excuse Councilman Lassay from the roundtable at this time? All right, it was, uh, moved by Councilmember Shepard, seconded by Councilmember Ross to excuse Councilman Lassay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. All right, thank you, with that, again, back to you, Robert, thank you.
Housekeeping things from my end. Everybody can just check their, just to get feedback, and appreciate that. And then also, if you hear my voice dropping off at all, if I'm too quiet, just let me know. You'll see a chat icon on the right side, I'm gonna be monitoring that icon, but if anybody has any questions directly for me, you can actually, where it says chat, you do the drop down arrow, you'll see a two, and you just say, "to Robert Hemmood," and then you can send me a chat directly, if it's like, "hey, speak up," or, "can you go back to the previous slide," or something like that, I'll be monitoring that, that chat box.
There's some feedback, Catherine still needs to mute her phone, her thingy.
I'm sorry, what was that, Catherine needs to do what with her thingy? Is her audio not working, or microphone, or what?
You're sick, Mayor, no, it's, it's been handled, we're good.
She did it.
We found sometimes if you switch from the computer to the, just using your phone rest, the computer audio will solve a lot of problems.
Just aside, I do see Councilmember Lassay.
Yes, uh, I'm here now, Matt Lassay on the call.
Okay, for the record, Matt Lassay has just joined the meeting, thank you. All right, Robert, please, please continue.
Hopefully, this is a little better for everybody to hear me. Um, so, tonight, we're gonna go over, we're gonna have to review the revenue slides that we did last time, obviously, we were taking a wait-and-see approach, two weeks ago, it's kinda week two into this situation that we have now, in the state with coronavirus. After two weeks, you have a little better idea of at least what the impact has been so far, and what it's gonna be for the next few weeks. Everything's changing on a regular basis, I'm gonna kinda go through this a little bit. I'll go slowly through the slides, I'll just pause for any questions at the end of each slide, and I'll, I'll take it slowly here. And again, if you can't hear me at all, just use the chat button, you say, "hey, speak up," I will hear you that way. So agenda tonight, just the COVID-19 impacts, and then I'm gonna show you amended revenue forecast, and some amended assumptions, and discussion on that forecast. So, just to refresh from two weeks ago, this is the revenue composition sheet, so again, this is, I just wanna show the mix of revenues that entail what we call the governmental operating revenues for the city of Snoqualmie. So again, this is not the utilities, this is not the capital projects, this is just what, the main, maintaining the day-to-day operations of the city. And you can see the property tax, again, is our largest revenue source, and our most stable, and that's the point I wanna make throughout this presentation, at forty-two percent. And sales and BNO, uh, total is about seventeen percent, and you can see utility tax, fourteen percent, charges for service, which include, um, community development charges as well, about twenty-one percent. And so, I'm not gonna spend much time on this chart, this is just, again, a breakdown by year, just the mixtures going forward, this is the original estimate going to the 2026 forecast. And so, the impacts to revenues so far, there, we don't know, again, when this is gonna end, where it's gonna end, how it's going to end, but right now, we do know that we've already seen about a month and a half of impact, so right now, um, just mining some local, regional sources, and also some state sources, I'm gonna show you some statistics that we pulled up, hotel occupancy rate, and Puget Sound is down between sixty and ninety percent. Visit Bellevue put out some, I believe, anecdotal evidence, that said that their hotel bookings are more like a ten percent of occupancy at this point, but I've seen fluctuations, and we're not sure, we haven't heard directly from the local hotel owners here, we're not sure what they're running at this point, but this is regional, what we're seeing, that, that booking, pretty much, an occupancy rate, if we're lucky, about twenty-five percent or lower. So that's kinda the average that's going on right now. Restaurant business in Seattle is down sixty percent, according to OpenTable. Um, our sales tax revenues here, the information we get from the state lags about two months, so we don't have anything real time, just anecdotal evidence, we know that, obviously, restaurants unopened, sit down right now, it's takeout only, it's limited hours in many cases, so we know this does have a significant impact to our local restaurant, uh, industry. Costco, however, they're seeing record sales, their grocery store activity in the area of at least Safeway is strong as well, but there's some supply issues that are being seen, and is that equating to, you know, cutting into profits again, we're not sure, this is way, way too preliminary at this point to see what that, an ultimate impact is. Uh, then, real estate traffic is down approximately eleven percent nationwide, that's people that are listing new homes, and people that are actively looking to buy a house, and local open houses, of course, are suspended at this point, there's approximately twenty two houses on the market right now within the city of Snoqualmie, that's down over fifty percent at this time line, I'm gonna talk about that a little more in the next slide. Uh, national unemployment claims totaled two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand for the week ending March fourteenth, it was up from two-hundred-and-eleven-thousand in the previous week. And just to show you how fast this turned, uh, the economy, the nation, national economy created about two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand jobs ending in February, so, the peak was really at the end of February, and that's, that's when the decline happened, and of course, that's when, uh, the emergency started in the nation. And, um, this next chart here is, just to indicate, you know, indicative of local employ, unemployment claims rising in King County, um, this, again, is about a week behind, so this is the week of March fourteenth, and you can see, as you started, uh, week one would be January first, that week, going into that tenth week, you can see the spike in unemployment claims, and again, we're expecting that week eleven, which would be the week through March twentieth, it's gonna be higher than that, the week before, so, again, we're seeing, unfortunately, a negative trend in this, this aspect, it could be temporarily, it could be, you know, just employees that were already hired as a seasonal basis that automatically qualify it for employment benefits, unemployment benefits, some companies, I mean, it just depends on the regulations, some of the people claiming unemployment benefits could be just temporarily laid off, the statistics don't give you that much detail, but this is at least the trend we're seeing right now. And this is just, an aside here, this is just kinda showing you what the mix of industry by occupation for residents that live in the city of Snoqualmie, you can see that most resident, the majority of residents here, twenty-two percent, are, are employed with education services, healthcare, social services, followed by professional scientific, followed by retail trade, followed by manufacturing, so you can kinda see where, a-again, where our, our sectors are, are focused in this community, and a lot of it is those professional educational medical services. So, the one thing that we're looking at, again, is impacts of the revenues of the city, of course, and one thing we have noticed, and has been in the newspaper a little bit, is online delivery disruptions, uh, I sent an email out, was trying to survey how many people are still receiving online delivery of groceries, and only one person in the city actually responded to me that they're still receiving the groceries. Uh, when I looked earlier, from my residence, just putting in my address on the ridge, uh, the only delivery service was through QFC, Safeway had no windows in the next week, and Amazon Fresh had no windows at all the next week. And I know, even when they do deliver, they are very limited on stock in many cases, so that causes another problem, we have a very high, um, amount of online delivery services in the city, uh, residents like it, they're popular, but for example, if they can't order, uh, say, online delivery at Safeway, they can actually order pickup at Safeway, but the catch is, the North Bend store, for example, has pickup services, but this, for some reason, the Snoqualmie store does not. So if there's not home delivery available within the city of Snoqualmie, residents could sign up for a pickup time in North Bend, but because they're picking it up in North Bend, they're picking up the groceries there, that revenue goes to North Bend, it doesn't go to us. So, continued online delivery disruptions could actually impact our revenues in the city, and also, because Amazon, right now, is not focused on general retail, they're focused on critical needs, again, we have a community that buys a lot of merchandise online, Amazon's one of our top ten, uh, generators of sales tax revenue for the city, any prolonged disruption of those delivery services will end up, um, impacting our sales tax base as well. But again, it's just very hard to tell, at this point, it's impossible to tell how long or how short this is going to last. Any questions so far? Okay, hearing none, I'll just continue. So, changes to operating revenues, again, current as of today, all this information's current as of today, I'm gonna be updating this for every meeting going forward, because I think this will change on a bi-weekly basis, at the very least, so, we're trying to get the latest information we can, uh, to keep on top of this, so we don't get behind the, the trends going forward here. So right now, we are, and I'm gonna show you detail in the next few slides, we're anticipating decreased year-end two thousand twenty government operating revenues, we're decreasing the forecast that we originally presented to council for two thousand twenty by four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, and again, don't worry, I'm gonna go through the details in the next upcoming slides. Part of that is an anticipated decrease of five percent of sales tax revenue for two thousand twenty over two thousand nineteen. And again, that's just assuming, right now, that March and April are disrupted, so again, we already see approximately fifteen percent of our current fiscal year being disrupted by the emergency, so even if things come back in May, we still know that there's going to be, again, a, a negative impact on April, or, excuse me, March and April, but again, we're adjusting this as new information becomes available. And again, as I said, we're building in current assumptions that the emergency orders will last through April as a minimum, we've also factored in a fifteen percent decrease in BNO revenue for two thousand twenty, and again, that's speculative at this point, that's our best estimate, the way I came up with that was I just looking at our mix of businesses that generate BNO, know that there's some limitations to a lot of people's business models, you have people working from home, you have, you know, a couple of retailers that can't be fully activated right now in the community, so we're looking at, that could take some time to come back, so right now, our best estimate is a fifteen percent decrease for, for two thousand twenty, but again, we're gonna be updating these numbers i- the second we get some updated data, right now, it's just speculative, it's so soon. And so, utility tax revenue growth, we're projecting a very slight decrease over estimate, we're just dropping it fifty thousand for, for just the, the, the loss of some of the in-person business, however, uh, more people are using utilities at home, and so, we think that even if every business in the, in the city, including the city hall, is shut down to businesses, people are telecommuting from home, they're using utilities at home, and so we shouldn't see that much of a drop-off, per se, on water, sewer, wastewater, for example, so utility tax revenue should be strong, and that, that being said, cable and telephone, you might remember two weeks ago, where I was talking about it, just historically being dropped off, as people are cutting the cord, and people are, you know, using Wi-Fi hotspots, or using their, their wireless services at work, for example, Wi-Fi at work for free, getting more limited data plans for their cellphones, things like that, all of a sudden, we have at least two months of activity, where that could reverse itself, we could see people, if telecommuting becomes more standard or more common for the rest of the year, we could actually see those two categories rebound a bit, it's not a big majority, it's not, it won't see a, a large increase, but it might be enough to kinda soften the de- decreases we've seen for those two categories. Any questions so far at this? Okay. And then, I, and again, I'll jump back to capital in a minute, I just, this is just a summary slide, wanted to show that we're decreasing one-time construction sales tax revenues by fifteen percent, again, that's just because we're losing at least two months of activity in, in the construction sector at this point, however, that could rebound, but again, it just depends on a business, uh, the business community, how much they rebound, some of that could be pushed into the following year's revenue, it just depends on those construction projects, if they still go on according to plan, again, it's a little too soon to, to tell what the, the long-lasting impact of this is going to be. We've also decreased REIT, approximately fifteen percent down from our forecast, so it was about one-point-two-million for the year, it went down to eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand, and this is not all due to, of the COVID-19 situation, of course, right now, there's not many houses listed for sale within the city limits, the, the housing market, relatives are not allowed to show homes, so all of that has completely stopped, but before this happened, we do have statistics for January and February, and what we've noticed is home sales, Bollamue, within the city of Snoqualmie, is actually down nearly fifty percent in the first two months of this year, compared to January, February of two thousand nineteen, um, which is very interesting, uh, because it looked like phase two of the townhomes, uh, for the mil, for the, uh, the rich phase two were still being sold in those first two months, so even with the snowstorm last year, a year ago, um, home sales are still double what they were January and February this year, that being said, the median home sales price for the homes for sale were up four-point-four percent, but Bollamue is way down at this point. Again, like I said, the last check, there was about twenty-two single-family homes listed for sale, uh, within the city of Snoqualmie, which is less than half of what it was in March of last year.
Robert, I think Councilman Mayhew has a question. Good comment.
Sure. Sorry, I had a question at the last slide, I just wasn't quick enough pushing the unmute button. So I just, um, I know you're kinda trying to give us the high level, and this is, this is very helpful in that regard, um, but I was just trying to figure, that, that first bullet talks about two thousand twenty, which is this year, um, four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, I was just trying to do some math to figure out roughly where that came from, is there a typo in that second bullet, is it fifteen percent sales tax reduction that you, because the to, I was just trying to figure out how you came up with, 'cause I'm not, the math isn't working for me, I was just trying to, but if it was fifteen percent, then that would be about what you've got there, so, is that maybe a typo, it's fifteen percent for both sales tax and BNO, is what you are projecting now?
No, I don't believe that's the typo, but I'll get to the item I have said in just a couple slides.
Oh, okay, I'll wait, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Bob Jeans?
Yes. Good, Bob.
Well, in more than one slide, it looks like you are looking at the year-end impacts, and that the adverse impacts are like a two-month period, seems like February, March, or March and Ap, March and April, and I don't think that's consistent with what we're hearing nationally, and on the state side, that this thing could go on for many more months, and therefore, I'm concerned that you haven't decreased these year-end totals enough.
Councilmember Jeans, I agree with you on that point, that's why I, I made the point a little bit earlier, that this is so preliminary, because again, I, I have nothing to go on, as far as, we don't have any actuals coming in, because a lot of this information lags a bit, and it, it really depends on when the order is lifted, if the order li, if does lift in two to three weeks, we could see activity, you know, not fall off as much, but if, of course, if it goes on further, it's going to impact us more and more, so this is something that we're reevaluating on a regular basis, and it's just difficult at this point to say we're gonna have six months of the downturn, where we don't really know. I'm also gonna talk on the next couple slides about why I'm not depress, but I'm not decreasing it more than I am right now, I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more here, so, just stay with me, and hopefully, I'll get your, your concerns alleviated or answered at least.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Back on the one-time revenues, the other item that we're looking at is, we're looking at decreased rev, ta, gas tax revenues by forty thousand in two thousand twenty, again, gas tax revenue, um, again, that's our share that we get from the state pot back to the city, has been decreasing over time, but right now, obviously, demand is very, very low, we do think that'll have a lasting impact, so at this point, we do believe that'll drop about forty thousand for the year, if not more, and that's the number we're watching. Car tab fees, again, unrelated to the current situation, but of course, we're still awaiting the Supreme Court decision to see the fate of the car tab fees, and its impact on one-time So back to the revenue for, operating forecast, and again, I'm gonna go through the details of what we're assuming here, in just a few following slides, but you can see with the governmental-type revenues, essentially, what's happening with this slide is that the forecast that we expected to hit this year, at this point, we're pushing it off one year. So for example, if we were looking at revenues that were approximately, excuse me, um, eighteen-point-six-million this year, we're looking at hitting that in a couple of years, so what's happening is, right now, we're dropping lower, we're push, pushing things out a year, so for example, in two thousand twenty-one, you can see, we were expecting eighteen-point-three-million in revenue next year, the downturn, I mentioned, the down from twenty and twenty-one on the blue line, was our original estimate, if you remember talking to, uh, what I explained two weeks ago, was that, that decrease is because some community development revenues that were, we were going to realize in twenty wouldn't happen in twenty-one, so we're expecting that curve to go lower instead, so if you look at the eighteen-point-three-million that we're gonna hit in twenty-one, now, with this forecast, you see that we don't hit that until twenty-two, so right now, that four-hundred-and-seventy-six-million, excuse me, four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-dollar figure, what that means is we're essentially pushing our forecast out a year, so, instead of hitting, again, eighteen-point-three next year, we would, in twenty-one, we would hit it in twenty-two, I hope that makes sense to everybody, so that's, again, this is subject to change, this is based on what happened so far.
You're not expecting any recovery over time?
We are, let me get into that. So again, if you look at this, we are recovering.
Not according to this chart.
But we are, we're recovering in twenty, twenty-one, what happens, though, is the base is dropping, so again, instead of hitting eighteen-point-six this year, and eighteen-point-three next year, if our assumptions hold constant, there's nothing that's going to, you already lost your base, you already lost four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand out of your base, you're still growing, but you're growing on a, a lower base, 'cause you never realized at eighteen-point-six, you're down to eighteen-point-one in twenty, and then you're down to seventeen-point-eight in twenty-one because of that lack of CD growth, so, if you see if I go from twenty-one out to twenty-six, I'm at the same growth rate each year that we were at before, but I'm at a lower base because I lost that four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand this year, does that make sense?
Yeah, but there's still pent-up orders and other things that may bring you back online, but this is all a guess.
Well, Brian, I had the same confusion reaction, but if you, you were looking at what you seen earlier, if you look at, like, the bu, the blue projection on two thousand twenty-one versus the red dash line in two thousand twenty-two, the number's almost exactly the same, eighteen-point-three, eighteen-point-two, go a year ahead, to twenty-two and twenty-three, eighteen-point-seven, eighteen-point-six, uh, nineteen and nineteen, so in other words, it, it eventually catches up, but because of the loss in, in this year, you'll never gain that back, it just, it just means that, that will catch up again, but it won't ever, it, it won't catch up on the timeline, but it'll catch up on the amount, it'll just be a year delay in hitting those revenues.
It's a Councilmember Holloway's point, if we were Issaquah, I would say you'd have pent-up demand going, but, but because of the mix of revenues that we have, remember, property tax doesn't move here, so we still know that that's in the base, so that's not gonna, again, this is factoring in nothing, this is just our base forecast, no growth, no one percent, it's just the base forecast, so we know that, as I showed you before, over forty percent of your revenue will not move, no matter what, so you're gonna make, you'd have to make it up on sales tax and BNO, but again, we don't have a robust sales tax base, so you're talking about two million dollars on sales tax, about eight-hundred-thousand on BNO ongoing, and we have a very narrow base of businesses, so a lot of that is online sales, we don't get a lot of business-to-business output, per se, from the business park, we get a little bit, but not a lot, so there's just not a lot of areas where we would have pent-up demand, there's not a lot of areas we catch up, we don't have an auto dealership that goes through major cycles, we don't have a Costco that goes through major cycles, so because of that, there's just not a one sector that would have huge pent-up demand, and I thought about this, like, in terms of the hotel, you think about the Salee Schloss, they have, I think it's ninety-some rooms, Hampton Inn has about ninety-nine rooms, you can only fill ninety-nine rooms, so, they come back, then they're full, they go back to where they were before, they can't go to two-hundred rooms, 'cause they don't have two-hundred rooms, so, a lot of the businesses we have, they just don't have a way to rebound more than kinda the average curve, per se, I hope that makes sense, but that, that's kinda how we're looking at it, it's our business mix, there's just not a lot of room, as far as the growth in revenues, to propel something that would have pent-up demand, there's just not a lot of sectors here, within the city limits, based on our business mix, that have that.
I've got Councilmember Ross and Councilmember Mayhew patiently waiting for comments or questions, Councilmember Ross?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I said, just in a chat, um, it shows, so I'm looking at your previous, from two weeks ago, um, it, you also showed it included a recession impact, and the chart that you're showing us now actually looks a little bit better than with recession impact, so, are you saying we're gonna be lower because of what's happening now, and then we should still anticipate a recession in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four?
Well, that was just showing what would happen during recession, so that was just hypothetical, I think, um, at the very least, just looking at the national data, we're headed for a one- or two-quarter recession, but it doesn't mean it's going to be a quote-unquote "average recession" of fifteen months, or six quarters, so that, that's really where kinda the uncertainty is right now, I took that out because, um, there's probably less of a chance for a quote-unquote "double recession," I mean, I don't know what would happen, but again, this could be a more shallow recession, where we come back right out, you've heard a lot of economists talk about a V-shaped recovery, um, kinda like what happened after nine-eleven, what happened after the dot-com bust, where you saw a couple quarters of downturn, or three-quarters of downturn, then it racked, you know, the economy grew back up, so, again, it's just too preliminary to tell what the, the long-lasting impacts are. And it's even, it's even difficult, like, when I mentioned unemployment claims, because a lot of companies, uh, when they lay off or furlough employees, they're entitled to unemployment benefits, but they could rehire them in a month or two, so again, that's why it's, it's very hard, very difficult to tell it from that. Does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
Um, yes. Um, yes.
So we're not thinking that, we just don't know what the severity of this is.
Right, okay.
According to what the current operating conditions we have, this is what we think the magnitude will be. But again, even in two weeks, we're going to revisit this. We're, we're looking at the numbers as they come out.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Yeah, I, and not to belabor this, and, and, um, Mr. Moot, I, I appreciate that you guys are trying to update these as quickly as you can, and I, I think that's fantastic. Um, and, and this is moving rapidly. I just want to point out, sort of similar to what, um, Councilmember Holloway was saying, I, I think you may want to look at this, um, because the red line there does not, um, represent either a V-recovery or a U-shaped recovery. And most, most shocks are V-shaped, but even if it's a U-shaped recovery, you're actually showing a never-recovery. So I think you might want to relook at that, so, you know, for example, this would imply, for example, that restaurant prices go down and never come up, or that restaurants close and, and never, never reopen, nothing ever reopens, or hotel rates go down. Like, you just may want to look at that, I, I suspect, but I don't know any better than you do. I don't profess to know better than you do, but these are, I suspect that red line comes back to the blue line if it's the sort of recession you're talking about. But you guys, you know, maybe that's just something to keep looking into. I, I just thought, um, I'd, I'd throw that thought in there for you to, to think about. And then, Mayor, I just wanted, I, I had noticed that, um, uh, Councilmember Shepherd had also been, uh, in the chat session trying to, um, ask you questions, well, just want to make sure.
I'm sorry, I just, I just noticed her, thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
Hi, so I was wondering, and in two thousand eight, for property taxes, did the income to the city go down as a result of all property taxes declining?
No, they were flat.
So they never declined at all? I thought there was something written into the code that said that there is, there is a situation where property taxes could actually be reduced as far as what the city can expect to collect from, um, from that.
We could look into that and get back to you. I mean, at this point, I'm not seeing any major devaluation, but we can get back to you. Okay, I'll move on to the next chart.
Councilmember Mayhew, you still have your mic on. Did you have anything else to say, or?
Oh, yeah, I just, well, on that last point, I just wanted to, to say, I thought that the way, my understanding of the way the property tax works is regardless of whether pro, property values go up or down, let me say that differently, whether property values go up or down doesn't change the amount of property tax we collect. It may change the rate per thousand, but it doesn't change the dollars we collect, was my understanding. Um, so is that not a correct understanding?
Uh, I believe that's correct. It, it occurred to me that the only, during the, the, the Great Recession, the only thing that threatened certain taxing jurisdictions in collecting property taxes was when the property, when the property values th, fall through the bottom, and then the levy rate goes up considerably or doubles, then it starts to hit an overall cap. And I can't remember if it, I think, three dollars and fifty cents or something for all jurisdictions buying that can't exceed that. And then what happens is junior taxing districts that are the, the least on the priority start getting dropped off and don't get revenues at all. Uh, Sidhu was in the crosshairs on that one and had to get to an exception in order to save themselves. But, but I'm not aware of any, anything that sort of threatens the city, a city's tax base.
Got it. Thank you very much.
It's pretty bulletproof.
All right, continue, Robert.
Yeah, so the next chart, this is just our revised chart. Uh, total governmental revenues, again, projected now for twenty is eighteen point one four million. I'm going to show you the difference, uh, from previous. But again, if you look at the line for sales and use tax, back to the V-shaped curve argument, our largest taxpayer only generates a hundred thousand in sales tax out of the two million. So we don't have, we just don't have a major taxpayer that, like, for example, when I did sales tax consulting in my previous job, when I looked at different cities that had, um, a car dealership or a Costco, they'd see more of that boomerang effect going into recession, out of recession. They would see, you know, ten to twenty percent drop in revenue, and then go up ten to twenty, twenty-five percent. So again, what I'm doing is, I think, twofold here. We're not dropping it precipitously, and we're not growing precipitously on the back end. So we're going into the recession a little more mild impact than, say, a Seattle or a Bellevue because of our, just our unique mix of businesses here, and the fact that we don't have, you know, any one given large taxpayer. I, and so that's why I, I believe that we're, you know, some of the other cities are, I know, drastically reducing their sales tax forecast. We don't have that kind of boom and bust cycle with the type of business mix we have here. And so again, that was kind of in my thought process into the forecast. But again, as we get more information, we'll update that information for you. But I'm going to go ahead and jump just to the differences with the next slide, and I can come back to this slide. Somebody wanted to at the end. Um, you can see the difference from the previous forecast. I'm just going to go into projected twenty twenty, sales and use tax. That includes the public safety and B and O taxes. So collectively, that's going to be, that's ongoing, that's not the one time, that's about three hundred and forty thousand. So that's three different sources. That's local sales tax, the criminal justice sales tax you get from the state, and the B and O revenues. So total about three hundred and forty thousand, um, under what we projected for twenty. But again, we projected growth for twenty. So I took away approximately four to five percent growth total for all those sources combined, and I dropped in five percent, so five percent for sales tax and then fifteen percent for B and O. So hopefully, uh, Councilmember Mayhew, that'll make a little more sense to you, I hope, on that explanation. A utility tax, again, I dropped at fifty thousand, um, just, just a negligible impact on there. Fines and fees, um, just very little, I dropped that approximately thirty thousand. And then street revenues, I rounded up, it was about forty thousand that I dropped off the gas tax. So total, that's about a four hundred and eighty thousand, a decrease from the projected number. Does that make, does anybody have questions on that? Okay, I'll go on then. And so with the capital revenue sources, you could see, again, um, we're anticipating three point five four million, actual of nineteen, you could see the total capital revenue sources. We go down for twenty, it's going to go to two point oh three million. I'm going to show you a chart on the next page. Again, as I talked about, I reduced the one-time sales tax forecast from four hundred thousand to three hundred and forty thousand. This is one where I'm definitely going to revisit, because this could be one where you do see a boomerang, if you do see a construction project put off, and then one comes back in twenty-one, that could increase in twenty-one. So this is, this is one item that we could adjust going forward here. Road gas tax revenues, this pretty much is just the TBD funds, which you get plus some of the entitlement payments from the state, very small payments, plus the, the TBD. This is not the additional temporary, this is just the twenty-dollar base TBD. Again, this is also subject to the Supreme Court ruling on I ninety, nine seventy-six right now, but we're still in our appropriated budget for, for capital. REITs, again, it was one point seven million for REIT, that was one point two million in the, in the base REIT last year, plus approximately five hundred thousand dollars for a one-time payment for the salee's sale. And so this year, we estimated one point two million. I dropped that to eight, eight hundred and forty thousand. But you notice on REIT, I, I do restore it to one point two million in twenty-one going forward each year. And utility tax, uh, that's the payment of the bonds, again, that's fixed. We talked about that last time. Property tax excess, uh, the fire station levy that drops off after twenty-two, that's also fixed. And the King County Parks levy, again, the language is, um, that the city will receive each year no less than a hundred thousand dollars. So that's still in the base there, and that, that will not change, hopefully, again, because it's on property tax generated. Any questions on this? So again, just to chart out that, the difference in the chart between what I showed previously on one-time capital and what is now, again, most of that change was due to, um, reducing the REIT forecast plus slightly reducing the one-time sales tax forecast for construction in twenty. So you can see right now, it's just two point oh three million in twenty, um, instead of two point four six million that was originally anticipated. But in this case, we do go back up to the line for twenty-one. We're still showing twenty-one at the original estimate, which is two point four one million. So again, this is more quote-unquote "spiky" than the ongoing revenues. That's why we do believe there, if you did see recovery, right, in twenty-one, this should at least go back to the baseline, if not higher. This is something to look at going forward. And again, it also depends on, on how long this emergency lasts and what the construction or the existing construction companies and revenue and even the real estate companies do at this point. And so this is speculative, it's early. Robert, any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I want to make sure I understand how, how we're able to have this dip and then all of a sudden have it bounce back. I'm, I'm trying to understand how, how on the previous forecast, you showed a, you know, basically, a line trend where we went down four hundred and seventy-six thousand, and it continued to have that four hundred and seventy-six thousand difference. Wh, why are we all of a sudden be able to bounce back into twenty twenty-one to get to the two point four one million?
Yeah, so let me go back to this chart. It's the nature of the revenue sources. So again, we're talking about two different types of revenue sources. Remember the, I know everybody likes the ongoing or the smooth revenues versus the spiky revenues. But I showed before on the previous chart, this was the ongoing revenues, the standard ongoing sales tax, standard ongoing property tax, standard ongoing utility tax. And so that's where I came up with that forecast. When I go back to this chart, what I'm showing is the one-time sales tax for the more spiky revenues. So again, like one-time construction. If construction projects are put off and then they're restored next year, that goes, that just goes back to the base. Now, that being said, remember, if you remember the previous, uh, budget sessions that we've had, we talked about, uh, the ridge being built out. So right now, we're, we're just talking about the base sales tax, just one-time sales tax for construction that we're receiving in a standard year after build-out. So we're just going back to that line, which again, is a smaller line than it was two years ago, for example. And the same thing with roads and the REIT. If REIT is restored, because again, we think that REIT, again, has some very unique circumstances on it right now. If, we're assuming the real estate market gets back to normal or somewhat normal next year, uh, we do believe we'd hit that one point two million, but again, that's one of those wait-and-see approaches. But again, that's something that could bounce back faster than, um, again, lodging or sales tax, where we have small restaurants, we have, we have a limited way to regrow revenues, but we're not dropping them in spots. You could see REIT is a more precipitous drop. We're taking, um, over three hundred and fifty thousand out this year, and we're putting it back next year. Uh, so again, this is a more precipitous drop just based on the quote-unquote "spiky" nature of REIT, spiky nature of home sales.
Okay, I think I understand.
Okay. And again, none of this is anticipating anything new going on in the community, so this is just existing. So again, once, you know, the real estate market even gets back to normal, you're going to see, of course, existing home sales go back up. How are they going to go back up to where they were? That's the big question. But right now, absent anything else, we're assuming that once we come out of this, they would go back up to the levels they were. And then, in the build-out scenario. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just, no, no, Councilmember LaSey, I can't see your mic. Uh, I don't know if you're present in the room or in my phone, but, uh, please enter.
But I'm, I'm good. That, that answered my question. I was just trying to make sure I understood correctly.
Okay, thank you. All right, continue, Robert.
Thank you. And so just revenue items to watch in the upcoming weeks. We're looking again at, you know, how long is this emergency going to last? I think that right now, it's anybody's guess. Would the president say it might be another week? We've heard the governor say it might be another month. We've heard a lot of different things. It's very unclear right now, and it could be a regional issue. We're looking at what the impact of emergency on the projects that are already in progress in the city. That includes the Millsite and Riverdale impact statement, that includes finishing the high school, that includes the C I, city CIP projects. Again, a lot of them are still moving, but slower. What happens if this is more prolonged is another, that, that's another question that will come up in the future. We're looking at, what is the duration of the disruption of online delivery, grocery, retail goods? Um, one contrast to the unemployment claims is a lot of people have probably seen that Amazon, Safeway, QFC, Walmart, they're all trying to hire temporary workers to ramp up their, um, inventories and their supplies in both their distrib, distribution centers and their stores and their delivery drivers. If they're able to, to solve that, maybe they hire some people that are laid off from other companies. They might, you know, plug in that supply chain and do larger online delivery business than they're doing right now. So that could actually rebound faster. That's one thing that we're looking at, too. But then again, what's the long-term impact of lodging and entertainment disruptions and the behavior of tourism? Does it bounce right, right back? Are there still going to be precautions in place in terms of social distancing that might last beyond the emergency, six to twelve months? What's that going to do to tourism in the area? What's, you know, the local economy, the fiscal help of major local employers? I know, uh, the president had a press conference a couple hours ago. He mentioned targeting Boeing for, um, some kind of relief that obviously would, would assist the local economy. But what happens to some of the other companies as well? What does it look like? What's the fiscal situation look like? What does the disposable income of our residents look like in just a year or two from now? That's going to weigh in on our forecast. It's going to impact our forecast going forward. Again, every, every downturn or every threat or challenge to revenue, local government revenues is different. This is no different than that. This is a very unique situation. It's a very fluid situation right now. It's going to change probably week to week going forward for a while. And that's all the slides I have for, uh, today, um, and I'm going to entertain any more questions right now.
All right, councilmembers, any other questions or comments at this time? All right, hearing none, uh, probably good that we finished up a bit early. Our, our thought was, in order to work any kinks out, we might need to dial into the council meeting about five minutes earlier, six fifty-five anyway. Some of the staff and myself might even be earlier than that. Uh, you're certainly welcome to earlier if you want, but let's, uh, figure on a, what, eight-minute recess or whatever, and just be, be back ready to, to log on around six fifty-five. Uh, we'll start right at seven o'clock. Thank you all.
Thank you.
If I understand the protocol, we have to, uh, log out of this meeting, and then I'll dial back in on the, the link that was sent to you for the council meeting itself.
That's correct. What I'll do is I'll end this webinar and then immediately begin the second one.
All right, very good.
Load, and then, Mayor, when you want to start the meeting, you just press the start button again.
Okay, very good.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I call this Snoqualmie City Council meeting to order. Uh, I would ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance or at least those in the room. I don't, I can't, I don't see the video streaming yet, so I'm not, or I don't see of the room, so I don't see who's in the meeting. Uh, Councilmember Hallway, you're, you're on the notes. Please lead us if you're comfortable with that, please. Joan's about the only one there, so.
All right, I'm not there, but I'll stand up and look somewhere. I pledge allegiance.
Look to the flag on the streaming video if you, if you have it open.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Uh, Joan, could you please give the roll call or take the roll call?
Uh, yes, um, Councilmember Jeans?
Here.
Councilmember Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Hallway?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Lusay?
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Here.
Councilmember Sundwall?
Councilmember Sundwall, you'll have to turn your mic on.
Councilmember Sundwall?
Uh, he's still in the meeting, is he not? He's there. His mic is, his mic is on, but we can't hear him. Um, Sean, you may need to drop the computer audio and go to your phone or something. Something's wrong with the audio. We can't hear you.
Mayor Larson?
All right, but, yeah, I am here, thank you. All right, with that, uh, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated or as presented tonight?
Sundwall?
I'm moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hallway and a second by Councilmember Ross. Is there any discussion, council?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember, uh, Shepherd.
Okay, would like to remove the warrants off of the, uh, consent agenda and also AB 20 dash 041.
AB 20 dash 041, okay. All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, any further discussion, council members? Staff, were there any items that we needed to add last minute that, uh, we've got a lot of theory of things going on that we need to clarify before we move on? Okay, hearing, hearing nothing further, uh, with the amendments suggested by Councilmember Shepherd, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion is carried unanimously. Uh, with that, we will move on to, uh, are there, hello?
Oh, sorry, I just spoke as soon as the thing went green.
Oh, okay. Was that a no?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I was, I was just, I'm confused on what got pulled or not. I'm sorry. Could you just repeat what got pulled, Mayor?
Council, Councilmember Shepherd pulled the warrants in Agenda Bill 20 041.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I vote aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, there are no items for public hearings, proclamations, presentations, and appointments tonight, so we'll immediately move on to citizens' comments. Uh, let me check. Looks like we might have more attendees, uh... Oh, Wayne, Wayne figured out the hand. Wayne, you know the protocols for poll comment, so if you could just state your name and address for the record and go ahead, go ahead, sir. Wait, wait one second before you start. Uh, Joan, are you taking time?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you. Three minutes, Wayne.
Okay, sounds good, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Wayne Russell, 8438 Meadowbrook slash Wildcat Way Southeast. Uh, anyhow, I'd just like to hope everybody's staying safe and, uh, that I guess we're going to finally enforce the park closures. Some of those photos on Facebook of people shoulder to shoulder up at Jeannie Henson and up on Rattlesnake Ridge did not look very good to me. I still believe a lot of, uh, the process right now is still a lot of political hoops to jump through, but, uh, I really believe that the spread is the main concern. A friend of mine, a neighbor, works for the Veterans Hospital and they said they have no cases there at all, but that, uh, basically the ease of spreading of this virus is the main concern right now. And I, I'm sorry to hear that you have it, Mayor, and I hope you recover, uh, rapidly. And anyhow, the rest of council members, I'd like to thank Mr. Lusay for the last council meeting when he tried to talk me into staying home and I didn't listen to him. This time I did and I'm glad you used this for our chance to be able to speak. And that, that's really about all I have for now and thanks a lot and keep up the good work.
All right, thank you, Wayne. Uh, I see a Kai Hathaway has joined us. I'll open your mic in case you haven't found the little hand or raised hand. Kai, are you? Kai Hathaway? Mayor, are you able to hear? I'm sorry, am I able what?
Are you able to hear me?
Uh, whoever's... The voice is very garbled. Try to say that again, please.
This is Sean. Can you hear me yet?
I, yeah, we can hear you, Sean. It's still, it's, it's a little, uh, garbled, but I can hear you.
So in other words, like normal? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay, it seems like it's getting clear. All right, I don't think there's any other members of the public that wish to speak, so with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Uh, all items listed below being acted by one motion action items include minutes for the March 9th, 2020 council roundtable and regular meeting. Uh, other approvals include Agenda Bill 20 037, agreement for consultant services with Northwest Hydraulics Consultants Incorporated for the River Street Embankment Protection Amendment Number Two, Agenda Bill 20 038, reject all bids for the Azalea Park restroom fire damage repair project, and Agenda Bill 20 039, advertise for bids for Railroad Place North Newton Street and Delta Street project modifications. Do I have a motion, council?
John, move.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ross, and I think that might have been a second from Councilmember Sundwall. Uh, is there any discussion on any of these items, council? Or, I'm sorry, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on any of these items prior to action? And again, I'm looking for a little hand to go up from anyone, but if I don't see that, uh, then we can proceed. Any, any discussion, council, on these items, then? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Uh, with that, we'll move on to ordinances. Agenda Bill 20 029, ordinance amending chapter 2.90 of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code, delegating authority to sign certain minor contracts and emergency contracts without prior city council approval, adopting a comprehensive purchasing, professional services, and public works contract matrix, matrix, and providing for severability and effective date. As council recalls, this was introduced at the first meeting in March and is ready for action tonight. And if you could just read the motion and the summary statement's already been written.
Move to adopt ordinance number?
1226.
Amending chapter 2.9 of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code, delegating authority to sign certain minor contracts and emergency contracts without prior city council approval, adopting a comprehensive purchasing, professional services, and public works contract matrix, and providing for severability and an effective date. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion, motion, a second, approve of Agenda Bill, uh, I'm sorry, ordinance... Motion, motion a second, approve of Agenda Bill, I'm sorry, ordinance number 1226 is stated by Councilmember Mayhew. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to council discussion and action? All right, seeing, seeing no one raise a hand, is there any discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is Bob Sterbank.
Go ahead, Bob.
At the last FNA committee, this was discussed again, and committee requests were made for some additional clarifications, just to be very precise about the difference between the various dollar amounts in the table. And we committed, making, we committed to making those changes, and I will apologize, what I see attached here is not that, and I can only say that was in my court, and we were working on various other matters related to COVID-19, and my apologies that I did not make sure that, that a corrected version was in front of the council. It is a technical item, I think, as, as we discussed, or I think, mayor, as you said to FNA, if, if a contract somehow had an even dollar amount that appeared to actually hit one of the lines between the differing authority, we would err on the conservative side and seek the greater authorization, but nevertheless, I, my apologies to council and to the mayor and staff, that we don't have the corrected version here.
Mayor Larson, my?
Go ahead, Councilmember Ross.
Thank you. My version shows it. It shows that you put in the under and over, under the dollar limit.
And we did do that, I think there were, there was a case or two still that was identified by the committee, and that I, I know I did not have an opportunity to go back, and what I see reflected on my version here is a February 13 version, so. If the council is comfortable with it, we certainly know the differences at a staff and administration level, and we could make technical corrections if more precision is needed, even following council action based on the clarification authority that's granted in the final section.
So it occurs to me there's two ways we could approach it now to proceed. One is to have you go, like, go through the three or four areas where it was still not picked up, as I recall, this was addressing Councilmember Lissay, I think, at the last council meeting about this issue. Another is to approve it contingent upon FNA doing a final tweak to some of those items on defining the over and under, any remaining items.
Mayor?
Uh, who, is that Councilmember Hallway?
Yep, the guy with the green.
Yeah, go ahead.
Notwithstanding all this, I would like to propose, I would like to motion this back to FNA for discussion again next week. Notwithstanding the issues we just discussed, I think there's some other items that I and other council members would like to have FNA discussion at before proceeding forward. So I'd like to motion back to committee. May I have a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Mayhew.
All right, there's been a motion a second, to motion back to committee, council, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried, six to one. Agenda Bill goes back to committee. All right, moving on to Agenda Bill 20042, Ordinance Related, Relating To Utility Shutoffs, Authorizing The Mayor To Suspend Utility Service Shutoffs During Declared Emergencies, Amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code Section 13.12.040F, Providing Perseverability and Effective Date. This is to waive council rules of procedure 9.6.2.2 and adopt on first and final reading.
Move to waive council rule of procedure 9.6.2.2 and adapt on first and final reading ordinance?
1227.
Relating to utility shutoffs, authorizing the mayor to suspend utility service shutoffs during declared emergencies, amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code Section 13.12.040F, and providing perseverability and an effective date. May I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Sean.
Sean, okay. All right, motion, motion a second to approve, ordinance number 1227 is stated by Councilmember Mayhew. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to action? Or prior to further discussion? All right, seeing no one raise their hand, any discussion, council? Yes, sir, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Mayhew.
So I have a question for Mr. Sterbank, I'm just not clear, is the version that we have here, the version that the administration is final with, or was there a revision to this that we need to read in in any way?
If you mean the version that is in the packet, that I am seeing on the electronic agenda, that is not the version that we would ask council to pass. I sent earlier via email a version that I indicated was the administration request that it be substituted as a striker. It does one thing in addition to the version that you have in front of you, and that is, it would authorize the mayor to suspend, in addition to utility shutoffs, suspend imposition of finance charges, penalties, and interest on delinquent sewer and water bills. And because of those penalties and interests are provided in additional separate sections of the code for sewer as well as water, that striker version of the ordinance refers to a couple of additional sections in Title 13 of the code. I think there are two additional ones in addition to what we see reflected in the version in front of you, which is 1312040. So Mr. Sterbank?
And Bob, could you please explain why the versions changed from the initially posted one to the other? As I recall, it was changes going?
Certainly, the, the code as it currently stands mandates the imposition of finance charges in the amount of 1.5% per month on delinquent water bills and sewer bills, and on delinquent sewer bills, the imposition of a 10% penalty, and states that the delinquent amounts, including the penalty, bears interest. The, there was some conversation at the committee level as to whether suspending that authority would somehow be a gift of public funds for, for going utility revenue that was otherwise due on delinquent amounts and making the utility whole. As council will recall, utilities are enterprise funds that are required by law to recoup their cost of operation. Last week, the Attorney General circulated some guidance related to a gift of public funds, and now going into that in detail on the public, provided the city, I think, with adequate legal support to provide for the mayor to suspend those charges in the interest of public health, and ensuring that people are able to afford to keep their utilities on, and that we don't suspend and have people who have suffered adverse economic consequences as a result of the emergency, digging themselves in a, in a hole that they couldn't get out of. And so, the proposed striker amendment would add these other sections to the code and authorize the mayor to suspend not only the shutoffs, but suspend imposition of finance charges, penalties, and interest during the tendency of the emergency, or during such shorter period as the mayor might determine. For, in particular, for people who have suffered adverse economic consequences as a result of the emergency, either through lost job or lost income.
Mr. Sterbank, Mass., is it legally appropriate or procedurally appropriate for me to make a motion to adopt the striker version as distributed to the council in your email of 3:08 PM today, or do we need to take a different path? Is that an acceptable way of, of moving the striker in?
That is, I would, I would move to substitute the ordinance in the packet, and that has previously been moved, to substitute the striker for the previously moved ordinance.
I so move. May I have a second?
Okay, I have motion a second, second by Councilmember Hallway. Motion by Councilmember Mayhew to replace or substitute the Agenda Bill 042 in the packet with the striker one from Bob Sterbank's email earlier. All right, any further?
Question, mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Hallway.
Can we, can the presenter bring up the striker version?
Oh, good question, yeah. Brennan, who's that, Brennan or so, there we go. Did you want Bob Sterbank to just quickly go through it with a summary review?
Summary where the changes were, just for the record.
Bob, could you do that, just focus on the, the areas where they changed from the one that was in the packet that the council received? For those that didn't, just to see their email.
Just a moment.
And for the presenter, the rest of us are not on a big screen.
Which page would you like?
Yeah, don't, don't do dual pages.
Bless them all.
Kevin, just take guidance from Bob Sterbank, he'll, he'll start, he's just gonna focus on where, where the specific changes were.
All right, starting at the top of page one in the title, we have added, where it says authorizing the mayor of the city of Snoqualmie to suspend utility service shutoffs, and then added the language and imposition of new finance charges, penalties, and interest. And then in the listing of code sections amended, where previously said only, amending Snoqualmie Municipal Code Section 1312040F, it now says 1304400, 1308050, and 1312040F. Then if you scroll into the body of the ordinance, following the now there for provisions on the middle of page two, you'll see the new Section One, which amends 1304400.
Hang on, Bob, hang on, let them catch up to you and scroll to page two, there we go. Bob, tell them if they're going too far.
I'm sorry, I'm going, I'm scrolling through my own version, so I was not following the presenter.
Okay, can you give a specific section on page two? Is it like in section one, or just above that, or?
Page two, there is a new Section One.
Okay, there.
1304400.
All right.
This is a section that mandates, otherwise, in the absence of the amendment, mandates a penalty of 10% of a delinquent sewer bill, then due, plus interest at 12% on the delinquent charges and penalty. The proviso that you see added in underscore language at the bottom of page two, going over to the top of page three, is parallel to the proviso that we were previously talking about for shutoffs, except it refers specifically to authorizing the mayor to suspend imposition of the penalties and interest under this section, for those customers who have lost a job or lost income due to pending emergency. If you continue on to the top of page three.
To Section Two?
Section Two.
Okay.
There is a parallel of virtually identical language change to Section 1308050 of the code, which is the provision of the code, the existing language, which?
Brennan, scroll to Section Two, please. Just bring the Section Two to the top of the page there, so we can see the entire, so there you go, thank you. Go ahead, Bob, sorry.
Sorry, mayor. It's essentially identical language, but for the reference here to finance charges, rather than to the penalties and interest referred to in the preceding section, but again, authorizes the mayor during the tendency of a declared emergency to suspend imposition of new finance charges for folks who have lost a job or lost income due to the emergency. Those are the only?
Anything else, Bob?
No, other than in 1312040, the last section, Section Three, we did add some language again there, tailoring this more specifically to people who suffered some adverse impact in some way for the emergency.
All right, keep, keep scrolling down, Brennan.
So now we're on the top of page four, a mandatory language to 1312040, and the language that I'm specifically referring to is the second sentence of that underscored, that begins during such suspension, comma, customers who have lost a job or lost income will continue to accrue utility charges, but will not have new finance charges assessed or services shut off for non, or delinquent payments.
All right, anything else?
I have a question.
All right, Councilmember Hallway, go ahead.
Not aye, I'm good with this.
All right, thank you.
Sean has a question.
Sean, go ahead.
So, sorry if I missed this, I, I completely agree with all this, my question is, is what's gonna be required of the individual to demonstrate these things? I, I can't imagine we wanna be in a position of being a, you know, having to analyze every situation and say yes or no, I just, how are we going to identify who qualifies and who doesn't?
Well, I think we're gonna leave that to the mayor, the mayor's suspension directive, whatever he may call for, based on some advice from the finance director and utility folks. It, I, I did not know whether council would be comfortable with just a flat-out waiver, rather than something more tailored to, to people who might actually have experienced some direct consequences as a result of the emergency, hence the drafting language, the reference to the lost income. If council thought that was too complicated, it could certainly strike that language.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it's too complicated, I, I'm just trying to figure out how do we make it easier, this, by the way, this should not be a council decision in terms of who gets it and who doesn't, and I'm not suggesting that, I just, I'm trying to make it, I guess, a little more cut and dry for the administration, who ultimately has to, to make this decision. I mean, what is lost income? Is that a percentage? Is that, you know, what is it? I, I don't know, I'm just trying to make it easier for you guys.
It would, you know, my, we hadn't discussed that in great length, but it was my, my thinking or approach that, given the emergency and everything, in a very fast-changing environment right now, that we simply don't have the resources to sort of be taking, or defining and developing some sort of a protocol or process to determine actual need, I'm depending upon the good faith of the vast majority of the community, I don't think, I don't think most people would, would say, hey, we just got wind of this, let's stop paying our bill and get a free ride on payments. There isn't much motivation, it seems to me, for someone to wanna somehow abuse this. It's really.
I think what I would love to see, whenever this is over, whatever that even means, you know, sort of like we did with, with Snomageddon last year, we sort of reviewed the cost and how that, how we need to prepare for that in future, I think this will be a good, an opportunity to look backward at some point and say, hey, do we need more whatever constraints around this? My, my hope is we don't, and so I'm fine moving forward as it is, I just, I would like to see six months, whatever, nine months down the road, sort of a reporting back on how many people needed to use the service, and what sort of strain that caused in the city, or did not.
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, but for right now? Yeah, that's a great point, yeah, but for right now, I'm not planning on any litmus test that slows down our capacity to just be, um, offer some relief for people that are gonna be suffering on a multitude of fronts, so.
Catherine had a great question about whether this applies to businesses as well.
Uh, it'll reply to any utility rate payer, I assume, like commercial or residential. Well, I actually, maybe I should caution Bob, uh, Bob Sterbank or, um.
As drafted, the, it's the ordinance doesn't distinguish.
Yeah. Yeah, especially since small businesses are gonna be suffering as bad or worse than most folks.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilor Shepherd.
So what does the term, um, that you use, the striker, uh, what does that mean? I, when I first heard the term, it meant nothing to me, so what does it normally mean to, in this scenario?
Bob?
Apologies for using a shorthand reference without explanation. It, it's typically used in the state legislative context to refer to a motion that, um, if done in full, would strike out the entire text of a pending motion or bill and substitute entirely new text in its place. So, uh, it, it tends to be a, uh, just a shorthand reference for substitution of one piece of legislation for another, that, that is, substitution for, for the, the bill or the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion, counsel?
Mayor, I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, um, Mayor, my question is, I, I've seen some other municipalities who are taking similar type steps in their language, um, u- using wording, um, that defines the period for these, uh, suspension of, um, late fees, et cetera. That they use language that says for the duration of the emergency and thirty or sixty days thereafter, um, which strikes me as an intent to recognize that there may be some difference between when an emergency is said to be over and when people might actually have, you know, be up and on their feet financially. I'm in thinking about what, um, so, so I was gonna ask if, if you had thought about asking for that or, or what your reaction would be to adding that. And, but then I'm thinking about the comments from, um, Councilmember Sunwall. Perhaps that's something that, you know, w- we could, um, look back at when we do the, you know, he referred to maybe six months from now. Um, whenever we look back at this and sort of debrief it, maybe that's a time to think about a further revision of this based on whatever the experience is, but I, so really just looking to you, had you guys thought about some sort of language like that? And, um, kind of what, what's your, your thought on that?
Uh, uh, we hadn't discussed that, or Bob Sterbank may, may have given some consideration of that, but, uh, it certainly is a great point, and, uh, I think it's clear that most folks, once the emergency is over, may take two or three months to start recovering to where they could make payments again. Um, so I'd certainly be amenable to, to if someone wanted to, or if you wanted to offer amended, amended language or something to put in there. But again, it's not baked in stone, as you said, we could come back at any point in the coming months and make some tweaks and adjustments as well. But I'm, I'm certainly supportive of doing that.
So maybe I could ask Mr. Sterbank, if I was to make a motion that we take the language of the striker and just wherever there's a, uh, period of time referred to, uh, that's referring to the duration of the emergency, that it, um, is amended, say duration of the emergency, um, plus an additional sixty days? Is that, is that just too cumbersome, or is that something that you, that would be workable to, to make such a motion?
Or, or Bob, would that still comply with this Attorney General's, uh?
Uh, I, I believe so, because it is, um, difficult to know right now with any certainty how long the, the emergency declaration will be in effect, or even how long recovery will, will need to be after technically the emergency's over. But the economy has not yet recovered such as to allow folks to, uh, be able to meet these kind of obligations. So it certainly would, would be in counsel's prerogative right now, given the facts before us.
Well, then Mayor, based on that, um, see what the rest of the council thinks, but I, I would move that, uh, wherever in the striker we refer to duration of the emergency, that we add language, um, and an additional sixty days.
Okay, do I have a, do I have a second, counsel?
Second.
Yeah, motion is second, a second by Councilor Ross. Uh, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, amendment is approved, thanks, Councilor Mayhew, so back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion than on the striker? All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, anyone opposed? All right, all right, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Bill twenty zero four three. Ordinance amending the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty biannual budget and providing for severability and effective date. Um, this is for, well, it says it's for introduction and action tonight.
Point of order, Mayor?
Mayor, that.
Point of order, Mayor, um, it's my understanding that the administration was intending to remove the, or to pull this?
Yep, thank you, but it was not pulled out of my notes, so, uh, thank you for pointing that out, my apologies. All right, uh, moving on to reports, uh, there should be a, I think a posted report from me in there, if there's some, happy to answer any questions or concerns of, uh, any.
Ma- Mayor, point of order?
Yeah, Councilor Hallway, go ahead.
I guess, uh, as it is published in the agenda, shouldn't we motion to?
Oh, good point.
Remove that thing and vote on it and at least have it covered that we motioned and tabled?
Okay, yeah, that's a great point. All right, uh, do I have a motion to pull Agenda Bill twenty zero four three from the agenda tonight?
So moved?
I have two moves.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, I think that was a motion by Councilor Hallway and a second by Councilor Mayhew, uh, to pull Agenda Bill twenty zero four three tonight. Any discussion? All right, with that, hearing, hearing no discussion, we will move on to reports. Uh, Parks and Public Works Committee, any report?
Do we have to vote, Mayor?
I don't think, thank you.
What are you, sick, Mayor?
Going since nine AM, a little rummy. All right, uh, yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, with that, um.
Mayor, just to remind, we have warrants and, uh, another agenda bill that was pulled from the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you. Uh, any report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
No reports.
Uh, just, just to let the council know, um, in part with conversations with the mayor of North Bend and to be consistent, giving a lot of very frustrated feedback from the community through the weekend of people being appalled at the level of activity at the skate park and basketball courts and other areas, I've made a decision, uh, in conjunction with North Bend to close all the sports courts in the skate park. Um, we tried to put that off as much as possible, but there's just too many people not respecting some common sense. Um, we have decided to leave the restrooms open, but the, but the, the pinch we have right now is that the staff is having a hard time coming up with the appropriate gear to wear, protective gear, that's recommended for the staff to do the frequent cleaning that we, we can certainly do if we had the gear. So we're trying to pursue finding that gear, if we get some, then we can return to more normal operations, but rather than completely closing the parks or the restrooms, we're leaving the parks in general open and the restrooms open, but we put signage on there to basically say, hey, uh, parks crew are not regularly cleaning restrooms due to lack of gear, please use your, your own risk. Brian, I know you're on, Brian, you're, you're, well, uh, where did Brian go?
I'm here.
Brian, did you wanna add anything, Brian Kraus, did you wanna add any, uh, details?
Here from Brian.
Uh, no, Mayor, you covered it very well. We, um, witnessed pretty much what King County has observed, um, and that is people, um, being very active in the parks and, um, in general, not taking social distancing seriously. Um, it's unfortunate, I think, that, um, we're needing to do something like this, but, um, I think it's an appropriate call, given our current circumstances with, uh, personal protective gear related to our staffing.
All right, thank you, yeah, I feel, and I appreciate you noting that King County has done, has done a similar, uh, direction as of today, given the similar issues. It, it, it was kind of a bad combination having the gorgeous weather over the weekend and everybody's got spring fever, cabin fever, so. Uh, even there were shots up at Rattlesnake Ridge where there were hundreds of people up at the top there. It was, it was rather jarring to see. Too many people were treating it like a spring break or vacation.
Mayor, uh, this is Sean, I, 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 I guess I, I agree with closing the parks. I also, as long as it's safe for city staff to, to properly maintain the bathrooms, I, I think it's important that we as leaders acknowledge that we have not been, we have not been asked to not go outside. And I think for those who are, or are heeding the governor's counsel of being perfectly fine to go out for a walk, um, to have those restrooms available. Um, I think it's important, again, as long as we can clean them and staff are safe in doing so. But this is not an order to not go outside.
No, it's a great point, and we've done nothing, hinted, uh, nothing to that extent, hopefully no one interprets it that way. In fact, when the doctor called me with my positive results, they said, you know, you know, don't hesitate to go out for walks or whatever, the fresh air and all that's good for you, so don't, don't worry about that, just don't come in contact with people. Um, I put on a leper suit if I do go out, so. But, uh, that's a great point, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, Bob Sterbank here, for those who might not have had a chance to watch all of the governor's remarks, he emphasized that point, uh, exactly several times.
That was at five thirty today, or tonight?
Correct.
Okay, uh, with that, I'll move on to Committee Development Committee, any report, uh, for, for CDC?
No report.
All right, thank you, Councilor Ross. I, I do have one new wrinkle of news in this department. Um, this morning, early this morning, I received an email from Mark Hoffman. He was happily on his way on the PCT, uh, out to a beautiful meadow for the first night. About ten miles into his journey, when he received texts and emails, uh, telling folks that they were advised to get off the trail. Um, so he reluctantly eventually made the decision to abandon his PCT journey and, uh, will be making his way back up to Washington starting tomorrow. So we've already reached out to him, and I think there's an interest on his part to basically, um, maybe put that off for the time being and, and come, come back and join us, so. Uh, I think that's kind of goo- good news at this point, but, uh, I thought you folks might like to hear that.
It is great news, thank you.
Yeah, not good news for him, perhaps, but, uh, too bad his plans were so foiled, but, uh, yeah. All right, Finance Administration Committee report.
Uh-huh, am, am I on?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, let's see, Mayor, we have, uh, the warrants and Agenda Bill twenty dash oh four one, I believe, to pick up?
Yes, thank you. You could go ahead and pick up warrants then, um, well, actually, I'll just read that in. Okay, approval of warrants has stated in the agenda packet?
Uh, move to approve, uh, warrants has stated in the men, agenda packet, may I have a second?
Beckett.
All right, I have a motion, a second, approve the warrants as presented. Uh, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on any of these items prior to action? Seeing, seeing no hands go up, uh, then, uh, any, any discussion, counsel? Uh, I'll turn it over to the Chair of the F and A Committee if they wanna queue this one up.
Yeah, I'll, uh, just report to, uh, the council that this week, uh, council member raised questions about a number of, uh, warrants, um, six of them, I believe, in all. Uh, the counts, the, uh, committee went through those, um, with staff, and, uh, it was the committee's, uh, conclusion that all, uh, of the items were appropriate, uh, claims against the city and therefore appropriate, um, uh, warrants, um, there were some, uh, questions about process and controls, um, and documentation, but they did not, um, uh, um, prevent the committee from concluding that all of the items were appropriate claims, and the committee recommends that, uh, they be approved.
All right, any further discussion, counsel?
Hi, this is Peggy Shepherd.
Go ahead, Councilor Shepherd.
Okay, so there were a number of concerns that I had with the warrants. A number of them had to do with meetings that are going to be happening, uh, while we're supposedly not meeting for COVID nineteen. So those arrangements were made before anyone was aware that there would be an issue with COVID nineteen. But I did want to bring to the council, uh, committee's attention and the council's attention that there's a number of meetings that are actua- actually were held after, uh, we have been told by the governor not to meet. So I'm a little concerned about the, uh, several meetings that are planned, um, that probably shouldn't be happening, um, and I also have.
Just as a point of order, can you please, um, uh, d- d- explain quickly how those are relevant to the warrants, uh, that in, under the, in the motion? If you could make your comments pertinent to the warrants, please.
These are warrants that, uh, we are paying that for meetings that shouldn't be held.
These are for warrants that have, of meetings that have already passed. Are you debating whether the meetings happened or not?
Yes, incorrect, these are warrants for meetings to be held that should not be held.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Councilor Mayhew.
Uh, to clarify, the, um, the, uh, warrants in question were where, uh, staff had, uh, signed up for, uh, upcoming, um, meetings, uh, conferences and so forth. And, uh, so these were the costs of signing up and making arrangements to attend. Um, so those were legitimate, appropriate claims against the city. Those meetings, uh, for the most part are not happening, well, they're for the most part being delayed, and so, um, those, uh, amounts may get applied to future meetings, or they may ultimately be refunded. But the claims by the employee for those amounts are proper because they were paid properly, uh, uh, for those meetings which they were approved to go. So with regard to approving the claims, uh, the fact that those meetings may get delayed or may not happen, uh, doesn't change that the claim is valid.
All right, thank you, Councilor Mayhew. Any further discussion, counsel? All right, uh, see, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes six to one. Um, moving on to Agenda Bill twenty zero four one that was pulled from the consent agenda, authorize staff to issue a request for proposals for utility rate study and general facilities charges update.
Move to authorize staff to issue a request for proposal for utility rate study and general facility charges update, may I have a second?
Beckett.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, Councilor Mayhew, and a second from, uh, Councilor Hallway. Uh, is there any member of the public that would like to comment aside or prior to council discussion and possible future action? All right, seeing no one raise their hand, uh, council, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Councilor Mayhew.
Um, the, uh, purpose of this, um, agenda bill is to request, uh, proposals, uh, if, uh, for a rate study for utilities increase, to remind the council in our work plan for this year. Um, and at our retreat, we discussed that utility rates are in place only through, I believe, through the end of twenty twenty, and so we will have to look at what the rates will be going forward. And, uh, a rate study is, um, how we go about looking at what, uh, might be needed in those rates. There's a lot of lead up that goes, uh, into performing a rate study. Uh, the council will need to decide what, if any, um, capital projects will happen and so forth. Uh, all of that will get determined by the council before this goes out for the rate study actually occurs. What we're doing right now, or what we're being asked to do right now, or what this is a motion to do right now, is to request proposals from qualified organizations if the administration deems, uh, one or more, well, deems one of them. the administration deems, uh, one or more, well, deems one of them appropriate, they'll come back to us and we will approve at that point, or not approve, whether to proceed with, um, actually doing a rate study. So this is merely to request, uh, it's merely an RFP so that that process is rolling so that, uh, later in the year, when we need to look at what to do with rates, we'll, uh, be able to have a rate study to support that. Um, so at this point, we're really not doing anything other than deciding to, uh, put out a request for proposal. Doesn't commit us to anything.
All right, thank you, Councilor Mayhew. Councilor Shepherd, you were the one that pulled this off the consent agenda, is there some questions or issues you wanted to raise?
Yes, I was looking at the previous rate study that they did in 2016 and 2017, and, uh, was done by the same organization that helped put the bonds together for the city. And my concern is, is that the focus of this, uh, request proposal does not give any direction as far as some of the things that I felt was absent from our last study. Our study did not look at what our base rates were for our utility charges compared to other jurisdictions, and it was primarily focused on how much, uh, money was going to be spent by our utility, uh, activity, rather than how we compare our, um, expenses to other jurisdictions. And I would like to see us, uh, have more input from council as far as what we're asking for in the RFP to begin with.
I have a question, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Smith.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what other cities have to do with anything to do with Snoqualmie, not, not a single thing. We, we, we have these fees so that we can maintain and rebuild our infrastructure, which is categorically different than any other entity surrounding us, not to mention one of the few that maintain our own, our own utility service. So basing our rates on what somebody else does is, I don't understand that at all.
I think the staff would concur with that sentiment, um, it's, yeah, but, I mean, uh, utility infrastructure is so profoundly different from community, the community and even how the government is structured around that, whether it's a junior taxing district or part of a city operations, there's few that are full service cities like Snoqualmie. We have a unique geography, a unique, uh, you know, demographic and makeup, the, it would be profoundly unhelpful to try to build a utility rate study around comparisons to community averages around the, the region or area, that would not make much sense. That's, that's, yeah, it's precisely why we get into a highly proprietary study. I'm sorry, who is this?
Brian, and someone else had a...
Bob Sterbank, was that you asking a question or, or someone else?
I, well, I was just gonna weigh in with the reminder, uh, similar to what I said earlier, which is that the utility in ours is a combined utility, is an enterprise fund, um, which means it's required by law to be run as its own, essentially separate business, and so the revenues, um, need to come in sufficient to meet the expenses of the utility. That's the reason for a rate study, is to determine what those costs of operation are, not just operation in terms of personnel, but operation maintenance as well as capital projects, uh, so that the rates can be set at a, a level sufficient to recoup those costs, as well as to pay the existing bonded indebtedness. So the consideration in that kind of exercise of, of other utilities charge, um, isn't relevant to what Snoqualmie's utility costs are and what revenue requirements are needed, uh, or what revenues are needed to meet the operational capital requirements.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to speak again.
Councilor Shepherd, go ahead.
Okay, so in our pat, last study, there was an element that was submitted as far as a comparison between different jurisdictions and their rates, and I think that you need to have a comparison between jurisdictions as a sanity check to make sure that our numbers are reasonable. And as far as being able to stay within your, your expenses being to match what your income is, it has to be going both ways. We right now have, uh, you know, we're going to be increasing our capacity, but it's not been completely transparent what that increase in capacity is looking to do and what the difference in cost is as far as increasing capacity versus just maintaining according to what is required for, by the Department of Health and, uh, and so forth. So we need to have some under, better understanding of what it is that we are, what's the least, the very least, we need to spend in order to maintain our utility, and if there's any additional costs, what they are and if we approve of them. But right now, I feel that this study is not, the request for proposal is primarily geared at, we're assuming we're going to be taking out more bonds, and I would like to have a lot better, uh, explanation for why we have to have those bonds. Right now, I hear say, what I think are sales pitches, and I think we need to have, do a better job of explaining why we want to go out and get more money. It's going to be a bigger burden on our, on our, uh, people who are trying to keep up with their water bills, and people are really struggling with paying water bills right now.
Well, it's a baffling statement, given that you have seen the comparables of rates that we have done to other communities, and we're always in the middle of the pack, are quite competitive, so th, those struggles are going on all over the state and all over the country. Uh, is there any other questions, concerns, comments from other council members at this time?
Yeah, Mayor?
Councilor Holloway?
I've been green for a while. Um, so, uh, I, I guess I concede that, uh, Councilor Shepherd was not fully cognizant of the last rate study. I will advise that we have done, as you said, Mayor, we have done that comparison, uh, about every time we go through this, okay, but the first start is to define what the city needs to maintain the facility, to maintain the service in what the level we decide we want, and that is irregardless of benchmarking. And once we do that, we come back and do the benchmarking, and as Mayor has said, believe in the last time we did it, we were pretty in the mid-range of the second quartile, below median in almost all of our rates. So don't say that work has never been done, that work is done consistently all the way through. You may not have been aware at that time, but it was done.
Mayor?
All the questions.
Uh, Councilmember Jeans, I noticed you're, you're green, did you have something you wanted to say?
Mayor, I think there was a motion.
Yeah, I called the question. Second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, who seconded the, the motion?
Mayhew.
All right, it's been a motion, a second to call the question, so at this point, any debate ceased, we'll need a five-two vote in order to, or a minimum of five. Uh, all those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
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 Oppo, opposed?
No.
All right, the motion passes six to one, so there's no further discussion or debate at this time, we're back to the original motion to approve Agenda Bill 2004-1, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Okay, motion passes six to one, thank you. Uh, with that, we will move on to, um...
Mayor, that, that need a vote on the main motion.
Oh, thank you. All right, so back, I thought I did just...
That was?
I just voted on the main motion.
Yeah, that was a vote on the main motion, agreed.
Did you call the question?
No, I did call the question and then I voted on the main motion. Uh, Joan or someone that was tracking that, can you, can you verify, please?
We had two... Mayor, we voted twice, that's all I know, we voted twice. Yeah, there was no amendment, there was no amendment to the agenda bill or motion, there was a vote on call the question, there was a vote on the agenda bill, we're good.
That's what I have.
Yeah, we're good. All right, so moving on to, uh, if there's, is there anything else for Finance Administration Committee, Councilor Mayhew?
Uh, I'll, I'll just, um, mention to the, um, to the full council that, um, w- we're having, uh, continuing to have discussions with, um, uh, administration about, um, internal control matters, um, including, uh, some, uh, recommendations that were made by the state auditor in their management letter, um, the administration is, uh, uh, has given us some reporting, there's some additional reporting that will come, uh, this is getting focused both from the committee and from the administration, um, boys are a lot on their plates right now, but, uh, just want to report that, that, that's not falling between the cracks, it is also getting attention. Uh, no further report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Moving on, Public Safety Committee, any report?
No report.
And I don't believe anybody added any items to the committee at all, so, uh, if there's no further announcements and whatnot, at this time, we're going to go into an executive session regarding potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, section I, double lowercase I, uh, and ask that Rick Rudemitkin and Bob Sterbank remain, the executive session is expected to last approximately 15 minutes and there may be action following. Everyone else is encouraged to go home and enjoy the rest of their evening. Uh, Robert or Kevin, I might need some direction from you as to how we're supposed to go into executive session, are we supposed to just start logging off people and remain on this session, or how, how is this going to be done?
I would defer to, to the city attorney Sterbank for the legal direction, what we can do is we can log everybody off, including myself, with the exception of the key people we have.
Okay, it's pretty, Sterbank is not an IT guy, um, can we get some direction from IT people as to how we're gonna get everybody out of this meeting except for those that need to be in the executive session?
The ideal, uh, solution would be...
Answer the meeting, take people out?
Please, please let Kevin talk.
Your ideal solution would be to, uh, have everyone log off and join into a private go-to meeting, uh, for the people who need to be in the executive session.
Have we set that up? Do we have invitations for that?
Robert?
Or should they use, or should they just use this same one? Log off and...
Separate one, um, just give me a five-minute recess, I can set up a separate one, and then I'll never log into it, but the mayor will be prompted as an organizer, so the mayor, it'll be your meeting, and I'll just, the council members, I'm sorry, it was council members plus city attorney plus Rick, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Did we get a new email?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody has to look at their email, or at least the council members and Rick and Bob Sterbank and myself.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we just ask everybody except who needs to be here to log off, and we can look at the attendee list until we get there, we don't proceed?
Robert, can you make the mayor the organizer and then log off?
Yes, he's already made the organizer, so we can just all log off and then ask the attendees to log off.
All right.